Times, um, we want to make sure to share them for the benefit of others who may not attend city meetings regularly or less familiar with the rules. So Planning Board will be starting with open comments from community members as Sarah mentioned, and then there'll be public hearings later in the agenda. We want our participants to know that city is really striving into a vision co-created by city staff. And Community for Productive, Meaningful, and Inclusive Civic Conversations. And that we worked with the community to develop these expectations for meetings. The vision is really designed to create conversation and dialogue. While also recognizing that we want to make sure everyone participating feels safe and welcome. We want to make space for different viewpoints in our meetings because we believe it leads to more informed decision-making. Next slide. We have a lot of information on our website if you want to read more about our productive atmospheres vision. Um, but I'm going to focus on what we need to know for tonight's planning board meeting. There are number of rules of the decorum that are found in the Boulder Revised Code, and we have some general guidelines. That are advisory nature to share with all of our participants this evening. We ask that all remarks and testimony raised tonight be related to city business. We will not allow any participant to make threats or use any other forms of intimidation against any person in this session. Obscenities, racial epithet, and other speech and behavior that disrupts the meeting or otherwise makes it impossible to continue is prohibited. And we do also ask that participants identify themselves by their first and last name before speaking. Next slide. We are in the Zoom webinar format and it allows participants from the public to speak at designated times. But we will not be turning on video for community members because of security concerns in this particular platform. Um, there's no pre-existing list for signing up to participate. So if you're in the meeting, we welcome you at the appropriate times to raise your virtual hand. And there's a couple of different ways to do that. At the very bottom of your screen, you should see a horizontal menu that has three clickable items. If you click on the hand icon, it will raise a hand next to your name and will get a call on you to speak. If you have an expanded menu, you can also get to the raise hand icon by clicking on reactions. Um, and I will look out for any, anybody participating by phone um, later on and give you instructions if needed. Um, so that comes to the end of this. And um, as Chair mentioned, this part of the meeting is to um, share comments not related to the agenda. So please go ahead and, and raise your hand if you would like to speak. Okay, nobody has their hand raised for this part.
All right, we will move on to approval of the minutes, uh, June twentieth, twenty-three minutes. Uh, everyone had a chance to give feedback, uh, and the updated are available now for. There any last minute comments? Otherwise, we can vote on approval. All right, no comments, then we will vote on approval. I believe this has to be a voice vote. So ML.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
And Sarah is a yes. All right. Great. So now we can move on to dispositions, call-ups, and continuations. The first call-up item is the Registry Boutique Hotel Use Review LUR twenty twenty zero 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 five. Use review for a proposed thirty-seven-room boutique hotel located eleven-eleven Spruce Street in the downtown. Two or DT two zoning district. Does anyone have questions for staff or want to call it up? ML.
I have a question. Um, I don't remember which staff person.
It's Al, I believe it's Allison. But ML, I think you're frozen. And we lost ML. Uh, there she is, ML. Uh, you're, you're muted.
I know, and I just vanished and came back. Wow. Um, so I don't know how much anybody heard, but so this is regards to number four in the use review criteria infrastructure. And I'm just curious as to how that is counted, is figured, given that it's going from an office use to a hotel use, and I'm wondering about water.
And to clarify, are you asking about the, some number four for the infrastructure, um, how the change in use might impact that infrastructure?
Yes, that's very clear. Thank you, Allison.
Just wanted to make sure I understood. Um, I don't know, Charles, do you have anything to add on that?
Well, as part of our engineering review, our, our engineering team looks at capacity and make sure that the change in use isn't going to be. Um, problematic. And then once things get to the building permit phase, there's a fixture count that's done. You know, to ensure that we're not outrunning um, any capacity issues, but um. Water and urban services in Boulder's core, um, for the most part is very rarely an issue. I think we only run into capacity issues when we kind of get out into areas of the city that are less served with better infrastructure. Um, areas that, um, you know, previously been served by well and septic. So in this particular case, in the urban core, um, our engineering team didn't see any issues with capacity.
Okay, so there is a process whereby engineering weighs in at this initial.
Hmm. Yeah, and then again, there's a fixture count that's done um, at the time of building permit to make sure that we're meeting uh, water and wastewater requirements.
Okay, perfect. That answers my question. Thank you, Allison and Charles. I, I do, I have no need to call this up. Thank you.
Anyone else have questions? All right, let's move on. Let's move on to call-up item number two. Uh, use review for restaurant uses with rooftop and ground level outdoor dining at thirteen forty-six Pearl Street in the building formerly occupied by Lazy Dog Sports Bar and Grill for new restaurants Skinny Fats and Chiba Hut. Uh, any questions or any desire to call this one up? Alrighty, excellent. Now we can move on to the public hearing items. Um, our first item is public hearing for fifteen seventy-six Hawthorne site review amendment LUR two zero two-two dash zero 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 five eight. Uh, uh, just for anyone who's listening, our process is that staff will present, and then I believe on, with this project. One of the representatives from the PUD will speak. And then we can ask, I mean, we can ask questions of Chandler after his presentation, then the PUD representative, and then um, public comment. And then we'll go to our discussion. Chandler, please take it away.
Hey, thanks, Sarah. Um, can everyone see my screen without my notes?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so yes, good evening, Planning Board members. Uh, first item on the agenda tonight is the fifteen seventy-six Hawthorne Site Review Amendment. Um, so the subject property is roughly sixty-five hundred square feet in size and is located in North Boulder on Hawthorne Avenue east of fifteenth street. Uh, the Growing Gardens Community Garden site lies southeast of the site across the Farmer's Ditch. The property is part of the nineteen seventy-two Orchard PUD, which is comprised of six lots totaling just over an acre. Developed as single-family residential uses, the original PUD approval provided for seventy-seven hundred square feet of open space per unit, which was averaged across the entire site. Um, just a note that under current RL two zoning standards, a minimum of six thousand square feet of open space per dwelling unit is required. Um, the individual lots in the PUD range from um, just under five thousand square feet to seventy-seven hundred square feet in size. Um, the original PUD included a large common area on the north side of the PUD, which contains shared parking, as well as a smaller common area on the south side of the PUD. Uh, which borders the project site and is part of this proposal, which was intended to serve as a shared play area. Uh, central common area was also created to provide a pathway to the home entrances and connect the parking area and the play area. Uh, the subject property is designated as low-density residential on the land use map of the Boulder Valley Cop Plan. Um, the description from the BBCP is shown here, which uh, LR is the most prevalent land use designation in the city, covering primarily a single-family home neighborhoods, including historic neighborhoods and post-World War II neighborhoods. Consists predominantly of single-family detached units at a density of two to six dwelling units per acre. And there's also a strip of land designated as Open Space Other, which borders either side of the Farmer's Ditch and runs along the southeast portion of the site in common area. It should be noted that while the mapping shows the OSO land use designation is covering roughly half the subject site. Um, the BBC designation language states that when the mapping applies to Area One linear features, such as water features or ditches. The intent is to interpret the map in such a way that the designation follows the linear feature. Um, meaning that it's really just kind of supposed to apply to the ditch. Um, there's an existing ditch easement that runs along the boundary of the ditch and provides a ten-foot buffer on both sides of the ditch. In terms of zoning, the site is zoned RL two, which is defined as medium-density residential areas primarily used for small lot residential development. Including without limitation duplexes, triplexes, or townhouses where each unit generally has direct access at ground level. Um, so this is just an aerial view of the subject site and its current state. Um, as mentioned above, the original PUD was approved in nineteen seventy-two, and construction of the homes began shortly thereafter. The original plat for the subdivision includes a six-foot-wide public easement for a paved bicycle and pedestrian path that runs along the southeastern portion of the PUD adjacent to the Farmer's Ditch. Um, it was intended to complete a transportation connection through the site, but uh, that connection was eventually built on the other side of the ditch. Um, according to city records and supported by two residents who have lived in the PUD since the nineteen seventies, the paved path was never constructed. And residents have been using the easement area as their private backyards since the homes were constructed. And its current state, the easement has numerous encroachments on all the properties that it runs through, including fences, mature trees, and landscaping. The existing home at fifteen seventy-six Hawthorne was completed in nineteen seventy-eight. And as you can see in this picture, um, currently has a fence encroaching into the path easement, as well as several accessory structures and building features located on the adjacent common play area. Uh, including two sheds and a concrete patio. And I will um, show an image here. So this image um, is a survey of the site. Um, the existing pedestrian path easement is shown in red. Uh, the property line between the common area and uh, fifteen seventy-six Hawthorne is shown in blue. And the two existing sheds and the concrete patio, which are currently um, located on the common area, are shown in yellow. Um, so following the call-up of this item on May twenty-sixth, or maybe it was May sixteenth, um. I did a bunch of research into permit records for the properties. Um, permit records are incomplete. Um, however, staff found that the existing sheds located on the adjacent common area were issued building permits uh, and constructed in nineteen ninety-seven. Under the name of the former, former owner of fifteen seventy-six Hawthorne. Um, which either indicates that uh, possibly an incorrect address was used, or that um, at the time, the common play area was essentially treated as part of the property at fifteen seventy-six Hawthorne. Um, the current owner purchased the property in twenty seventeen, at which time the existing sheds and concrete patio were already located on the common play area. And the fence and landscaping encroaching into the path easement were already in place. Um, these are some photos of the existing site provided by the homeowner, um, Thomas Bender, who's uh, here with us tonight and who will be giving a presentation. Um, this is looking south. Uh, we're on the um, west side of the property looking south towards the common play area. The approximate location of the existing property line is shown in red. Uh, this is another photo taken from um, basically kind of the point of the triangle of the common area looking north, standing next to the Farmer's Ditch. Um, the yellow lines indicate roughly where the paved uh, pedestrian path easement is, which as you can see is overgrown and contains a fence. Um, and then the approximate location of the property line between the common area and the home is shown in red. Um, showing that it runs across the um, existing paved patio area that is part of the um, property owner's home. Uh, this is standing on the west side of the house looking north. Um, the red dotted lines here uh, show the approximate location. Of the um, commonly owned uh, pathway that was intended to provide access to the common area, uh, which as I mentioned before, was never constructed. Um, and currently has a bunch of encroachments in it. You can see here, there's some um, landscaping that's in the way. And that it's generally just kind of shared yard area for residents there. So uh, the proposed project. As I mentioned, the purpose of this PUD amendment is to amend the Orchard PUD to expand the property at fifteen seventy-six Hawthorne. To include the adjacent common play area that the HOA no longer wishes to own or assume liability for. The project proposes to amend the existing PUD site plan to consolidate Lot Six of the Orchard PUD. Uh, which is fifteen seventy-six Hawthorne, and the portion of the PUD common area that is adjacent to Lot Six into one new lot, which will be called Lot Six A. No changes to the existing family, uh, single-family residence or existing accessory structures on Lot Six are proposed, and the other property owners within the PUD have all granted their permission in writing. For the proposed lot consolidation. Following this amendment, if approved, the applicant will be required to subdivide the property to reconfigure the existing lot lines to finalize the consolidation. Um, the conditions of approval would also require a long-term revocable lease to permit the existing fence within the pedestrian access easement on the south side of the property. Um, as noted above, the proposed lot consolidation does not affect the overall amount of open space per dwelling unit approved through the original PUD. Which was averaged across the entire site. Nor does it provide any additional development potential to the owners of fifteen seventy-six Hawthorne, because they would still be subject to the existing uh, PUD requirements and the existing city processes surrounding uh, owning a property within the PUD. Um, so this figure just shows the proposed lot consolidation. Um, so the key issue for discussion is um, just whether the proposed project on balance is consistent with the site review criteria. Uh, including findings related to consistency with the BBCP policies. Um, so staff finds that the proposed law consolidation is on balance consistent with the goals, objectives, and recommendations of the cop plan and site review criteria. Um, while altering the in, original intent of the PUD, the proposed law consolidation. Uh, would not result in any physical change to the existing PUD, would not change any of the open space or building coverage requirements on which the original approval was based. Uh, the existing density use and configuration of the PUD are consistent with the intent of the low-density residential land use designation in the cop plan, as well as the underlying RL two zoning standards. And will remain as such following the proposed consolidation. Um, so really, the, the criteria analysis was not uh, changed between um, the call-up memo and now. Um, so staff has found that the proposed project does meet the criteria of section nine to fourteen and is recommending the planning board approve the application in the form of the following motion. Which is to approve site review application LUR twenty twenty-two zero 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 two-four, adopting the staff memorandum as findings of fact, including the attached analysis of review criteria. Uh, and now I'm happy to answer questions, or um, if it's time for the applicant to present, I can answer questions after that.
All right, why don't we, um, Mark, you were the one who called this up. Do you, are you okay if we have the applicant present before you ask questions? All right. Applicants, wherever you are.
I'm here, and I will go ahead and.
Yeah, and you have ten minutes.
Yep, Thomas Bender.
Yes.
All right, let me get my, can I get my share going here?
Devin, can you help him with his share?
There we go, I think I got it.
Okay.
Cool. Hello, I'm uh, Thomas Bender. Um, I've been a Boulder city or county resident since nineteen ninety-two. Uh, moved into the city in twenty seventeen. Just provide some uh, background here. In nineteen, I thought it was seventy-three, but I guess it's seventy-two, the planned urban unit was created adjacent to the Boulder Community Garden on Hawthorne Avenue. The pud consists of six homes built from seventy-three to seventy-eight. The plan incorporates private lots and common areas, including a berm, carport, gazebo, and a topic of today's meeting. A narrow, a narrow access to small common area, a triangular plat. Uh, there's the project number. It describes a proposed plan in accordance with the City of Boulder laws and provisions to combine the fifteen seventy-six Hawthorne plat. These are approximate square feet with a triangular plat forming a single plat. The purpose of today's presentation is to address the concerns and questions from the City of Boulder planners, commissioners, and staff to allow for proposal to proceed forward. Um, so our goal is really to um, take the common area plat, clean up the property boundaries, and formally assume the asset liabilities of managing. And compare, uh, taking care of that combined property. Um, four areas here, a little bit of history on the pod, uh, the five areas of concern I wanted to address, uh, that were called up. The uh, support from the Orchard PUD, um, and then the ask. Um, so I guess it was seventy-two. Thanks Chandler for doing some additional research. Um, Diana McKnight and Joan Mini are actually two of the original homeowners um, in the pod, which is great. Um. They're at like fifteen fifty and fifteen ninety. Um, they collaborated with them together, much of the information, the historical information provided in the proposal. The property is unique in Boulder and provides an exceptional location adjacent to the Community Garden, Farmer's Ditch, and City Bike Path. The common and shared assets of the Orchard are plentiful, and care and maintenance of additional assets is not desirable. The proposal is to combine the triangular HOA-owned section with the fifteen seventy-six plat, I should say, has been long in discussion, and the community unanimously supported this initiative. Quick drawing, you've seen, this is uh, our home here in the triangular plat. I don't know that it's any bigger, or it's pretty close to a couple of these other plats. Some of them are, are larger, some of them are certainly smaller. Uh, they vary in size. Um, I think Chandler showed an access. I just kind of did this approximation of there's the access around the side of the uh, house to get back to it. Uh, there's never been a sidewalk here. Um. So the, the five areas of concern were privatization of public and community space. Facilitation of slow and quiet adverse concessions, consensus among neighbors is not a reason to really do anything. Uh, the, there was a concern that the memo was insufficient, and that there were perceived, there were barriers to the community space. I put perceived because. Um, there hasn't been any barriers to access, and just wanted to share that tonight, um, and then adversely possessing a community asset. Uh, so in terms of the first case, privatization of public and community space, uh, the triangular plat was never used as community property for a park or otherwise. In fact, the plat is dangerously close to the Farmer's Ditch and requires a fence for safety purposes. The triangular plat has been accessible with no obstruction since nineteen seventy-three, maybe seventy, probably seventy-two. When it was created, there has been no attempt to prevent or obscure access to the property. The triangular plat is not viewable by any of the other homes in the HOA, as it resides in what any reasonable person would assume is the backyard of fifteen seventy-six. It is not a natural or obvious extension of the existing HOA property. The triangular plat has been managed and maintained at the expense of the fifteen seventy-six property owner since nineteen seventy-eight, when the home was built. The HOA does not want to assume this additional liability as a shared burden. Uh, to the second point, facilitation of slow and quiet adverse concessions. While we can appreciate the recognition of future voices that they want to use this property as a shared asset of the HOA, there's never been any adverse concession. The plat was just not deemed suitable as an HOA community park. What appeared initially as a thoughtful idea to have a park never came to fruition. Perhaps the location, logical background of fifteen seventy-six, and obstructed view, and the size or the shape played a part. We have made no attempt to quietly acquire the property through any kind of eminent domain or obstruction of access. I've worked diligently with the HOA members, my friends, my neighbors, the City of Boulder, and staff to work through this process. The goal has always been to clean up the property boundaries to reflect actual use and desired outcome by both the pod and the fifteen seventy-six homeowner. Consensus among neighbors. As part of this process, we actively engage the feedback of our neighbors in the Orchard PUD to make a decision that applies to and affects our community. We agree consensus among neighbors does not make something right, moral, or correct. In this case, it was merely to demonstrate and make transparent that consideration on behalf of the current HOA homeowners. Was accounted for, and a collective decision was made to move forward with the process for the equal benefit of our community. Um, I think there was note that the memo was inefficient, that there were perceived barriers to access. Um, there's never been a fence there, and I have um, Diana McKnight and Joan Mini can attest to that. Um, the drawings don't show uh, any fence there. That's always been open. Um, there's the same drawing, just panned back. Uh, but yeah, the area in question is this access right here. That's actually just like a six-inch brick, kind of framing out a garden there. Adversely possessing community space. I had to look up adversely. It says in a way that prevents success or development harmfully or unfavorably. Um, this is similar to the point number two, facilitation of slow and quiet adverse concessions. We don't feel that adversity applies in this case. We're neither preventing success or development in a harmful or unfavorable way. We're working within the process and our HOA to complete what we hope the City of Boulder sees as productive and favorable path forward for all parties involved. Um, there was a comment, I forget who it was, about considerations for, for lot size being bigger and the footprint. Um, I'm assuming it would be given fair and consistent treatment as other similarly zoned parcels of the City of Boulder. That was kind of the sixth point. Um, so some support from each of the individual neighbors, Diana McKnight, Joan Mini, Bruce Sendal. I had a video for Diana, but I had a technical failure. I'll just summarize here. Uh, my name is Diana McKnight, and I bought the property at fifteen fifty Hawthorne Avenue in North Boulder in February of seventy-five. When we moved here, there was an agreement with Bob White, the head of Connecticut's Construction, that the property behind fifteen seventy-six Hawthorne would be a park for the kids in the Orchard Houses. Well, that was untenable, and we weren't going to have our kids go back behind somebody's house. Nobody could watch them or anything like that. It was just a pain in the neck, so we never used that property. And all of these years, nobody else in the other houses have gone back there and used it. Uh, in response to a question about access, if there's ever been any fences or obstruction to access the property. Ms. McKnight responded, the access has always been clear, just nobody wanted to go there, so it just seems like the practical thing is to let them have it. Nobody is objecting to it here. Uh, my video that failed. Uh, from Joan, uh, Mini, as the original homeowner of fifteen ninety Hawthorne, I fully support the annexation of the triangular plat located in the backyard of fifteen seventy-six home. The triangular plat has never been used by the community, nor was it well-planned as a common area, especially as a play area. Additionally, the HOA does not want to maintain it, nor accept liability for it. Sincerely, Joan Mini. And Bruce Sendal, my neighbor to the, the north at fifteen seventy. Since our arrival into the Orchard HOA in two thousand and six, the tract of land in question has always been discussed. The previous owners, Dean and Robin Paschal, also intended to annex the land, but found the process daunting in terms of time, effort, and money. I remember annual HOA meetings where in the land item was always a bullet of discussion but never resolved. I and my Orchard HOA numbers fully support this action as a group. We never have used it, nor have any intention of using it in the future, especially for its original purpose. In addition, the HOA does not want to maintain it, nor accept liability for it. Kind regards, Bruce Sendal and Paula McKinnon, owners of the fifteen seventy property. Um, so my ask is, uh, we feel we presented a reasonable and valid proposal to the City of Boulder. Uh, provided the required information. I've been working on this since twenty nineteen. Um, I address, I believe, the five areas of concern, certainly open to questions. Um, and would like the City of Boulder's permission to proceed forward to combine the existing five fifteen seventy-six plat and the HOA triangle into a single plat. Um, and that's what our goal is, looking for approval. So thank you, and uh, open for any questions.
All right, Thomas, thank you very much. Um, now is the time for clarifying questions. And if you, um, if you have a clarifying question, uh, be sure to articulate to whom you are addressing the question. Mark.
Uh, my first clarif, thank you, Sarah. Um, and thank you to the applicant and to Chandler for very complete. Uh, presentations and obviously a lot of effort went into this, so. And I'll, I'll address all sorts of things in comments later, but I do have two clarifying questions. Um, for Chandler, uh, when the city um, issues a. A building permit for a shed, uh, garden shed, backyard shed. What degree of specificity do we require for that uh, shed's location?
Um, well, I can't really speak to how, how we did it in nineteen ninety-seven, but um, I assume it's similar to today. Um. Quite a bit. I mean, an extract, an accessory structure permit goes through zoning review like anything else. Um, so we'd be. Checking for setbacks and checking building coverage and uh, height, et cetera. Um, so my guess with. I mean, you didn't ask this, but. I, I'm assuming the question relates to how a permit was issued for this shed that was built on the common area. Um. And I'm guessing that maybe somebody just didn't have, maybe we didn't do the background research to. Actually realize that this property was owned by someone else. Um. Or by the HOA, maybe it, just looking at a map, it appeared like it was the backyard of this home, because it does kind of seem that way. Um, I'm not really sure. We don't, we didn't have quite the, you know, sophisticated GIS and um, kind of digital tools that we have now, so. I, I'm not really sure what happened, but um, yeah, someone, someone did the review and, and found that it at least met uh, building coverage and setbacks, but. But that's for sure.
So, and that might follow on question to that for Chandler is, are the sheds in their current location. Violating any setbacks?
Well, it's more, I mean, no.
Let's, let's, I mean, let me rephrase that. Let's just assume that this was uh all the backyard of fifteen seventy-six. And the sheds are located where they are and it's one contiguous property as is being proposed. Do the sheds violate setback requirements in their current position?
No.
Okay. Okay, um. I have a a question for the applicant and I, and and again, I appreciate the applicant's presentation and uh. And uh is um paying attention to my concerns when I called this up. Uh, so thank you very much. Um, when you say the fence doesn't. Prohibit access, I, maybe I, uh, when I was at the site and I. Uh, I I knew the former owners, um, uh, you know, they're friends of mine, et cetera. But anyway, I went, I went, uh, I came into the property via the um from the north. Uh, to the community circle area there and then walk to the west side of your property. And as far as I can tell, I I again, I I'm not, this is not a debate thing. But it seems like you have a fence that runs from the house east-west to the property line that. Would prohibit someone from uh going back to the what is currently. At the HOA owned space is, am I, am I misremembering that?
Yeah, there's, there's a small fence from the corner, but it stops right at that little six inch garden wall. So that picture that Chandler showed, that's, that's the exact access area and you can see that it's. You know, it's wide open and it's, it's never been, you know, obstructed. So there is a, there is a small fence that was there, but it's not, it doesn't block the access. And then so it's open between the house, like, I think Dean, right before he sold it. Like, built the deck up on that side. I think he had a hot tub down lower, so when we bought it. You know, the deck was essentially there and there's, there's never been a fence since I've been there and according to Diana and and Joni. Uh, since seventy-two between the house and that area obstructing access.
Okay. All right, um, uh, thank you. I I don't have any further clarifying questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Mark. Uh, we will now go to, oh, Kurt, sorry.
Sorry, uh, yeah, I have a couple of questions for Chandler and thank you Chandler for the presentation. Um, my first question is, you mentioned in the memo or the memo mentions that. In order to change, in order to expand the house that is currently there. They would need to, if they, I guess, they could do it by right if it were a less than ten percent increase, is that correct? And it would be a minor modification if it were greater than ten percent? Is that correct?
Um, no, since, well, since they're in a PUD, there is no such thing as buy right. So, yeah, so they're in a PUD, so that's right. It's basically kind of like a, an overlay zoning regulations almost that apply to to every home in there, so. Um, if they're under ten percent expansion, it's a minor modification, which is. An administrative review process, meaning you guys don't get to see it. It's just a staff level. Thing. Um, if they're over ten percent floor area expansion, and there, there's other criteria. As well, that they would have to meet to make it a minor modification, but if they exceed the limits of minor modification, which the big one is the ten percent floor area. Then they're in either minor amendment or site review amendment or full site review, depending on the extent of the changes they're proposing.
Okay, and that would be a, a, a planning board process?
Correct.
Okay. And do we know the floor area of the existing house?
Uh, I don't know the floor area of the existing house. I mean, the PUD record, to be honest, is is. Not great, um, as was the case with many early seventies PUDs. Um, you know, kind of handwritten, like, here's the building coverage, here's the open space. Um, so we know the building coverage of the entire PUD, but I have not calculated the floor area. You would need. Um, you know, you need scaled floor plan and stuff like that to do that, so I haven't done that. Um.
Yeah. Okay, and we, yeah, so presumably there, we don't know anything about the floor area of any of these, the existing houses there.
Right.
Okay, uh, my other question relates to the. Wh- what originally was intended as the walkway connection, I think, between. The parking circle sort of thing there and the open space, which when I toured the site. It looked like maybe that connected to the east-west extension of fifteenth street on the west side of. This property. Do you know if it, does that actually connect you?
Sorry, are you talking about the, the kind of the middle pathway on the west side of the house or the um?
Yes.
Stream easement on the ne- next to the farmer's ditch.
Hmm, I'm talking about the one on the northwest edge of the parcel. That's shown, if you go back to your second or third slide. You can see it there in the, on the lot lines.
Yeah, let me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, the one that says zoning, I think.
Okay, uh, well, this.
Or or BBCP land use, I think they both show it.
Oh, right.
Yeah, so there's that little narrow space there on the northwest side, right?
Yep.
In, in, and it seems like from the lot line shown there, it seems like it actually is a connection to. That extension of fifteenth street. The, according to Google Maps, that little east-west section is called fifteenth street, even though fifteenth street obviously. Mostly goes north-south.
Oh, right. Yeah, you know, I I looked at that as well and it doesn't actually appear that way because the common area. This might actually be better, so the common area. Kind of butts into what was the play area.
Mm-hmm.
And then if you look at the BBCP land use, so the, the, the extension of fifteenth street kind of hits the side.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, whoops, now I'm just messing with my slides. Um, yeah, it's the side there, so I don't. Yeah, I mean, if if it was intended to provide a connection, it was not designed well at all because the. You know, the the lot to the north has a corner that kind of comes down and butts into that and then the play area. So, a- as far as I can tell from the PUD records, the sole intention of that um. Strip was just to provide access to the commonly owned play area.
Okay, yeah, in the context that I'm asking about it in is just whether it would provide an additional connection. Through there between fifteenth street and basically up to that traffic circle and or parking circle. And and then Hawthorne East.
Right.
I guess it's, yeah, it's kind of hard to tell.
Yeah, and I honestly don't even know, does, does the fifteenth street connection actually go? All the way there, huh? Yeah, I I'm not sure, to be honest, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. All right, thank you.
And ML.
Thank you, um, I, I just have a. So if this, if those accessory buildings were permitted, it seems curious that, um. When the coverage was checked. That. It wasn't apparent that there were two different properties there. Is that? Cause you said, yeah, they would have checked all of the, you know, zoning requirements and all, but they have two different owners.
Yeah, you're right.
A mystery, is that, we just got a mystery how this, how this ended up the way it was with, um. Proper building permits or at least building permits issued for the pieces that were built there, and yet it's kind of. Illogical that things were actually checked when there's two different owners.
Yeah, I can't, I can't really speak to the planners of twenty-six years ago.
Yeah, I didn't go look at the Boulder County property records to see how it's listed. That, I mean, that's the source to see, right, everything's properly and whatnot, but anyway. Curious.
Usually for a shed permit, you don't have to provide title work. Um. So, yeah, I don't know. Um. It seems, seems like uh, an error that we probably wouldn't make today, but I can see a number of different ways that it could have been made.
Right.
That way.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, ML. And Thomas, if you're not responding to a specific question, I'm gonna. Do you have, is, are you responding to a specific question that was asked?
Yeah, I was just, I was just gonna respond to to Kurt. You, you can squeeze between the bushes. And a fence that's there and get to fifteenth, but that's actually a separate HOA in there. And so they don't ever give us access to, to do, to do anything there, so it's a, it's a separate deal and. Yeah, you can walk there, but the access was, it was never set up to be like an access to fifteenth as near as I can tell.
Okay, uh, do you know at fifteenth there is that east-west section of fifteenth, is that a public street?
That's a, it's a private street there, um, that I think is maintained by their HOA. But I, I don't really have the, the, the details of there. I've just tried to deal with some tree trimming there and um. Uh, and it has to go through their HOA and it, it gets very complicated, so. And then when I told her it's not even my property, she. It, uh, the, the conversation kind of ended, so.
Okay, Chandler, do you have any insight on whether that's a private or public street? I don't even know how you tell that.
Um, yeah, I'm looking right now and. Um, give me a second and I can see what our GIS has to say about it.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, so it is, it is a private street, like Tom said, um, it looks like the. The actual fifteenth street ends basically where the T starts and then either side of the T. Are privately owned parcels that are owned by the neighboring HOA.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, we now have opportunity for public comment. Vivian, anything, anybody raising their hand?
I don't see any hands, a couple seconds. I think we might have applicants for the next hearing here and not members of the public who wish to speak.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Oh, all right, then we will move forward to planning board discussion. Uh, Thomas, I want to thank you for coming in. Or for appearing and Chandler, thanks very much. Don't go away in case people have additional questions. Please, thank you.
I have the next item to do, so I'm not going anywhere.
Thank you. All right, uh. Uh, who has comments that they'd like to make? Kurt.
Yeah, I'll start it off. Really, I had two, twofold concerns about this. One was losing that potential pedestrian connection uh there between that extension of fifteenth that I was asking about. And the parking area, which I think if we could preserve that. Um, that would be consistent with the access, transportation and mobility. Uh, subsections of the site, site review criteria. Uh, but I'm not sure that that applies, given that part of the access is, is private anyhow. Um, the other one was just allow, about allowing a potentially significant increase in the allowable size. Of property that, of the, the house that could be built there. Basically, it's a, what, forty percent or something increase in the amount of floor area. And based on the FAR limits that we allow for a significantly larger. And probably much more expensive house, which to me is not consistent with the BBCP. Goals and objectives. Uh, so those, that, that is my one remaining concern. Um, I would feel more comfortable about this if there were a condition put on this that said that. Any increase in allowable floor area would have to go through site review or something to that effect.
Alrighty, um, we'll want Hella to weigh in on whether we can impose that kind of, um. Condition on private landowners, uh, who might, who might wanna make their house bigger you and do it by right. So, or do it within the PUD, but we'll come back to that. Um, so thank you, Kurt. Um, other comments?
Wouldn't this be a great moment to actually figure that out? Whether the PUD would allow that or not?
Go ahead, Chandler.
Um, so. So again, any, any property in a PUD is subject to site review standards, so. Anyone in the beauty now could ask to expand their home by up to ten percent through an administrative review process. Um, I'm not sure what Hella would say about adding a, a condition that's more restrictive than that. I'm not sure if we could do that or not. Um, because right now, any of their neighbors could come in, right? And if they wanted to do an addition, they would automatically. Be in um some sort of site review process, so if it was under ten percent, they'd be in a minor modification. Um, I think the thing with this PUD that's, that's important to remember is that it's based on averaging of open space across lots. So they're not, so like, there's several lots in here that don't meet the minimum lot size requirements for RL two, right? So, like RL two requires six thousand square feet of open space per dwelling unit and the way that's usually provided is on a lot. That is six thousand square feet or larger. Um, and there are, you know, forty-seven hundred square foot or one, one lot that's under five thousand square feet in here, so. Um, you know, for them to come in and ask for an addition, automatically it kind of, um. If you're increasing your coverage by any like meaningful amount, you basically, we would have to have the permission of everyone in the PUD. Like, if they were in a site review amendment or a minor amendment. Um. The code gives staff the ability to basically determine who in the PUD needs to be notified of a proposal like this. And so because everything is average and everything is so tight, like there's so many small lots and they're, they're, don't have a lot of room for expansion to still meet zoning standards. Um, really, any expansion that would happen in this PUD, we would likely require everyone in the PUD to provide. Um, their approval of, of the proposal. Um. So, I, I don't know if that um addresses your concern at all, Kurt, but there, there is no buy right scenario here where they can kind of come in under the radar and. Just expand their house by twenty percent because they have a bigger lot. That's basically what I'm trying to get at. Um, anyway, they try to come in to expand, uh, they have to do some sort of site review process.
Uh, Hella.
Yeah, and if, if, if I can add to that, the property owner could come in today and ask for the same ten percent. Expansion under that process and imposing a condition. Uh, seems to me would be inconsistent with the procedures that the, the code already sets forth. Uh, for that type of expansion. And I think there's actually a couple of limits, it's. The minor mod process goes only up to a ten percent expansion or two hundred square feet. You also can't go over two hundred square feet. So that's another limit that exists.
Kurt, did you want to follow up with any questions?
Uh, no, but thank you for those very helpful responses.
ML, you had your hand up. Do you still have a question? Okay, anybody else have, not questions, I'm sorry, comments or conditions they'd like to put on the table for discussion? Okay, um, so I, let's come back to Kurt. Given what uh Chandler and Hella have said, do you still wanna try to, do you still wanna formulate a condition?
No, uh, I guess my understanding of how the PUD works is still a little bit vague. But I am satisfied based on those responses that. They, it, it wouldn't give them an automatic forty percent or whatever increase in allowable floor area, and so that's, that's my main concern. So I'm, I'm happy with that, thank you.
Okay, then, uh, unless I see a hand pop up, uh, there's Mark.
Oh, I, I was just, I'm sorry, I, I jumped the gun. I was anticipating you requesting a motion and I was ready to. Well, I, I was just, I'm sorry, I, I jumped the gun. I was anticipating you requesting a motion and I was ready to provide that.
Well, go ahead, please.
Okay. Um, so I'm going to make uh the motion the staff suggests and I'll save any comments. For the um comments that are allowed to the motion maker after they have a second, so. I move. Uh, to approve site review application. L U R twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 two four. Adopting the staff memorandum as findings of fact, including the attached analysis of review criteria.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay, M L seconds.
I'm sorry, is that, is that the right case number on the agenda? It's listed as zero 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 five eight. I'm not looking at staff's motion, I'm looking at the agenda.
Uh, I think the motion is the correct case number. Sorry about that. Yes, it's L U R twenty twenty-two zero 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 two four. That is the correct case number.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay, thanks Laura. The motion's been made and seconded, um, is there discussion?
Yes.
Mark, you've already indicated there is, so please go ahead.
So, um, first of all, I, I want to, as, as the person that called this up, I want to thank. Uh, Chandler and all of staff for uh bringing this back to us in a. And, and a complete form, and I, I understand this represents a, a lot of work. And I want to make sure that the board gets some of the benefit of this work. I also want to thank the applicant for. Um, responding again specifically, listening carefully and um. Uh, and, and providing uh this, the deep, their detailed response. And I, in addressing the applicant, I simply want to say that, uh, while. You addressed those concerns from your site uh specific. Thoughts, and that is, that is all that you should do. Uh, there are some larger issues of um. Board work and uh, and application of law in a quasi judicial sense that. Are at work here. So anyway, I just, I thank the applicant for being a careful listener and doing a great presentation. Um. I, I want to use all of this work uh to. Prompt us as we uh go forward. Uh, to be sure to look farther into the future about. Conversion of what is promised as public space or promoted as public space or, or other, other promises. Made that seem great at the time that uh can be uh derailed or. Uh, go unfulfilled. And so I think this is an example of one where uh this has. Uh, this is an asset uh that was presented to. A, 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 a different city government, you know, many decades ago. That has, has gone un, unfulfilled, but I, I want that lesson for us to carry that lesson forward. As we do um other uh site reviews. And I also want to sympathize with the applicant in the sense that, you know, when you, when you buying a home. Uh, and buying and selling homes, you, you place trust in the system, you place trust in title companies, you place. Trust in, in this kind of big machine and uh. You know, and then you discover that, well, things are not exactly as, as, as what you thought. And so. Um, uh, my comments about uh conversion of public, uh, public spaces to private property. Don't necessarily apply to this owner, even the prior owners, but it's just something that happens that I think we, we need to be very wary of. And so, um. Uh. I, I, those are, those are my um. Two main points that I, I do want to comment that the checklist on page sixty-six, starting beginning on. Page sixty-six supplied by staff. I have to uh find it slightly um. Ironic, I guess, that we say um under, let me get there. Under uh referring to the B B C P uh part two site design, A. Roman, little Roman numeral I. Um, we, we're talking about open space, open space, including without limitation, parks. Recreation areas and playgrounds, this is playgrounds is, is called out. And uh usable open spaces is arranged to be accessible and functional, incorporate quality landscaping and mix, mixture of sun and shade. And places together. And then. Seth goes on to say, the existing open space on the site is located to the south and the subject property is easily accessible by the property owner. Incorporating the common, the common owned play area into the subject site will not affect, access the existing layout or usability. And so the, the irony there is if I, if I, if I murder a guy and I get away with it for a long time. And I say, well, he's already dead and he's been dead a long time, hence nothing is really changing. It, it, it doesn't address what is, a, again, it's, it's old, but it doesn't really address. What is something that was either a failure of staff, of, of prior departments? Um, uh, and so anyway, it doesn't really address that and it's, 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 I find that a, a bit. Ironic, so um, I, uh, I, I am supporting this because we live in a world as it is. Uh, we are where we are and uh is this the, the simplest, best thing for everyone? Yes, I'm reluctantly saying yes, um, but again, I want us to. Be cognizant of what this represents as we go forward into, into other site reviews and other conditions on properties and. Promises made by, by people in regard to this general topic of uh conversion of public space to private. Um, I have one last comment that I'm only going to make after we take a vote on this, uh, this particular motion.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you, Mark, for all of those eloquent words. I agree with a hundred percent of what you said. And uh I definitely thank staff for this extensive research that went into this. I know. It was a little bit opaque and thank you to the applicant for your presentation. Uh, but I, I certainly echo Mark's concerns, uh, but I will be supporting this.
Okay, uh, anyone else feel the need to say something? Okay. Uh, all right. Motion to approve site review application L U R two zero two-two dash zero 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 two four. Adopting the staff memorandum of findings of fact, including the attached analysis of review criteria. Laura?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
M L?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Sarah's a yes, so it passed with six zero. Thomas, go forth. Go forth and do what you will. Um, okay, Mark, you had something you wanted to say after the vote.
Yes, and, and the reason I want to say it after the vote is I, um, again, I want to emphasize, uh. I, I don't think I've ever met Thomas. I, I certainly don't know him well. I have no connection to the site other than. I, uh, uh. I, I passed through it. Many times, many, sometimes many times a day and uh, and I, I just want to say that there, there is. There is, there, as Kurt alluded to, I think there is a, there is a winner here and, and that's the, the, the property owner in this case. Uh, gets twenty-eight sixty square feet of uh, of what was. Prior to this publicly owned property converted to private ownership and, and lot size matters in a, in a place like Boulder where land values. Are uh very high, then this, this matters. And so, and I, I don't. Begrudge them the fact that they are um. Getting something positive out of this. Great, that's good for them. What I, I, what I want to say is that. Um, they happen to be neighbors to growing gardens. And growing gardens is a, an incredible community asset, uh, providing benefits for. Uh, just myriad people within the city of Boulder. And especially they have really great uh children's programs and should the applicant ever um. Uh, and I have no, I have no knowledge, may, they might be deeply involved with growing gardens. I just want to say that, um, that there's a winner here and it's, there's a financial win. And if the applicant ever wanted to acknowledge that, then I think growing gardens would be a, a worthy, uh, worthy beneficiary.
All right, Mark, thanks very much. Okay, we're gonna move on to the next public hearing item. Which is a public hearing in consideration of a use review for a seven thousand sixty-two square foot patio expansion, expansion, excuse me. Of a restaurant use with associated landscape improvements at forty-nine, ten. And forty-nine, twenty Nautilus Court North reviewed under case number L U R two zero two-two dash zero 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 two eight. And I believe it is Chandler again.
It is me.
Okay.
Um. All right, thank you. Yes, we'll move on to uh the use review for forty-nine, ten and forty-nine, twenty Nautilus Court. Uh, which is the location of the Avery Brewing Facility. Um, I'd like to just note that the applicant is here, but just to answer questions, they do not have a presentation for tonight.
Thank you.
Uh, oh, sorry. Two screens always gets me, okay. Um, so in terms of the location, the subject property is located in Gun Barrel just east of sixty-third street off of Nautilus Court North. It is surrounded on three sides by industrial general zoning that is developed to the office and warehouse buildings primarily built from the seventies, eighties and nineties. Uh, the property east of the site is zoned R H four and contains the Boulder Country Day School. Uh, across Nautilus Drive to the southeast is Twin Lakes, which is a Boulder County. Uh, open space parks area, uh, Twin Lakes is a forty-two acre open space property containing two reservoirs that were purchased in two thousand and two. The reservoirs are used by the Boulder and Left Hand Irrigation Company to store and transport agricultural water. Uh, there are a number of I G zoned office warehouse buildings as well as county zoned residential properties that surround the lakes. The project site is located outside of the area guided by the Gun Barrel Community Center Plan. Um, and you can just see here, and I'll talk a little bit more about this later, um, there is uh an existing temporary seating area that was permitted during COVID. That's in the location of the proposed expansion. Um, so just some background, which I outlined in the memo. The existing Avery Brewing Facility was approved through site and use review in twenty twelve. As a two-phase development, uh, that included eighty-five thousand six hundred and thirty-eight square foot brewing facility and corporate offices. Uh, with a three thousand square foot gift shop, a five thousand two hundred and seventy-five square foot restaurant use and an eighteen hundred square foot outdoor seating area. The project was granted a thirty-three percent parking reduction and deferred construction of fifty-two parking spaces to allow for two hundred and twenty spaces to be provided where three hundred and twenty-nine were required. Since that time, all of the improvements included in the original phase one of the project. Um, have been completed. And there was an amendment to the phasing plan in twenty thirteen to allow for certain elements of the original phase one to be completed as far, uh, as part of phase two. Um, but uh, so existing, there's a sixty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-one square foot brewing facility with offices. Um, the three thousand square foot gift shop, fifty-two thousand or fifty-two hundred and seventy-five square foot restaurant and eighteen hundred square foot outdoor seating. Um, all of those have been built. The roughly twenty thousand square foot expansion to the brewing facility, which was approved as part of phase two, was never constructed. That's what's shown there in yellow. And the approval for that addition has since expired. Um, so you can see here, um, the existing outdoor seating area is shown in green. That's what they're currently using for outdoor seating. Um, there was an additional area of outdoor seating that was approved in the original approval that was never constructed. Um, and then as well, the yellow is showing um the interior expansion that was never constructed. And then the blue dash line is showing um the location of the existing temporary outdoor seating area and also the location of the proposed expansion. Um, so this is just an aerial view of the existing site. As you can see, um, the existing temporary seating area is, is just kind of informally uh demarcated. There's some umbrellas, chairs, and um I think there're barrels around um the edge of the seating area. Um, it was approved in twenty twenty as part of the city's outdoor seating expansion program, which was a city sponsored program intended to support businesses through COVID. Um, the current proposal generally falls within the same boundary as the existing temporary outdoor seating area, which has been operational since twenty twenty. Uh, so in terms of the land use, the subject property is designated as uh light industrial. Um, this is defined. As follows, uh, light industrial uses are concentrated primarily in industrial parks located within the Gun Barrel area along the Longmont diagonal and north of Rapa Ho. Uh, between thirty-third and sixty-third. Uh, the uses consist primarily of research and development, light manufacturing and assembly. Media and storage or other intensive employment uses, residential and other complementary uses will be encouraged in appropriate locations. Um, so the zoning for the site. Is I G, which is defined as general industrial areas where a wide range of light industrial uses. Including research and development, manufacturing, service, industrial uses. Media production, storage and other intensive employment uses are located. So very similar definition to the underlying land use. Uh, so the proposed project uh consists of a seven thousand and sixty-two square foot outdoor seating area to be added to the southeast corner of the site. Adjacent to the existing outdoor seating area. Uh, the proposed expansion would bring the total outdoor seating area to eight thousand nine hundred and forty-two square feet. And total non-brewer area, non-brewery area in the development. To seventeen thousand two hundred and sixteen square feet, which is twenty-three point two percent of the total indoor floor area. Um, this is only important because it complies with um a conditional use standard of the land use code. Uh, and the definition of brewery, which require the total restaurant and taproom area not to exceed thirty percent of the total floor area. Uh, the proposed outdoor seating area would bring the total required parking to three hundred and fourteen spaces. Uh, which, when you incorporate the previously approved deferral of fifty-four spaces, results in a thirty percent parking reduction for the site as a whole. Um, which is uh. Consistent with the thirty-three percent reduction that was granted through the original approval. So the key issue for discussion tonight is um whether the proposed project is consistent with the use review criteria, including um in particular findings related to the use. Being reasonably compatible with and having minimal negative impact on the use of nearby properties. So, um. In terms of analysis, so following the call up by planning board on May sixteenth, um, I spoke with Boulder County Open Space Biology Staff who are familiar with the Twin Lakes site. Uh, the Boulder County staff indicated that the Twin Lakes site does not contain any species of special concern. But does serve as habitat for bats, a variety of birds and various foraging animals. Uh, the staff members expressed the following recommendations. That all lighting be downlit, which is um already a requirement of city lighting code. Um, they also encourage landscaping strategies around the outdoor seating area to create a visual buffer. Um, this could include trees and shrubs, um, evergreen if possible, uh, tall flower planters, et cetera. Uh, they also indicated that the vegetation growing around the existing stormwater detention pond should be encouraged. Um, as possible to allow for maintenance and enhancement of the existing visual buffer between the Twin Lakes Wetland and the Avery Outdoor Seating. Um, really, the, their uh recommendations and concerns can all be summarized as saying, um, keep night as night. So based on these recommendations, staff has provided an additional condition of approval for the board's consideration. Requiring that the applicant submit and receive approval of a final landscaping plan, which provides for additional landscaping strategies around the outdoor seating area. That can create a visual buffer from the wetland and potential mitigation of noise as determined by a city landscaping staff. This would be at time of building permit. Um, staff finds that the city's existing outdoor lighting regulations are sufficient to minimize lighting impacts. And additionally, while the Boulder County staff did not express any concerns over the proposed hours or the existing hours of operation, which allow them um. To use the outdoor patio until two A M. Uh, staff has provided another condition of approval for the board's consideration, restricting amplified music within the outdoor seating area. Uh, to between the hours of ten A M to eleven P M. Um, so staff's recommendation, we have found that the proposed project meets the criteria of section nine two fifteen. And are recommending that planning board approve the application in the form of the following motion. Just to approve use review application L U R twenty twenty-two zero 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 two eight, adopting the staff memorandum as findings of fact. Including the attached analysis of review criteria. And I am happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any clarifying question? ML.
Thank you. Thank you, Chandler, for um. The information on this project. So I think I heard you say that the um two lakes are. Um, holding for agricultural use, is that correct?
Yes.
So they weren't natural lakes?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so there's no historical. Pattern of nature.
No, I think it's, I think it's largely kind of a adaptive habitat, if you will, that is developed around the lakes. See. Um, yeah, two reservoirs were purchased in two thousand and two.
I was out there today. They they seem like quarry ponds is what they seem like.
Yeah, I don't know. The information that I found says that they're used by um Boulder and Left Hand Irrigation Company to store and transport agricultural water.
Okay, that I was just curious about the history of of. Native habitat there, and it sounds like there might not have been. Any native habitat that it was a. Kind of a man-made situation.
I was just gonna chime in and say on Google Maps, they're listed as Davis Reservoir Number One and Davis Reservoir Number Two. Makes them sound not natural.
Hey, ML, any more clarifying questions?
No, I'm putting my hand down. Thank you.
Okay, great. Anyone else clarifying questions? All right, do we have Vivian? Um, time for public comment on this?
Just seeing if anybody has their hand raised. This would be the time. No hands raised, Sarah.
Great.
Oh, Lynn, oh, Lynn just popped her hand up.
Okay.
Um, let me just pull up the timer. And Lynn, you have three minutes. Please go ahead.
No subsidies.
Sorry, I was just out at the airport and it was hot ride home on my bike. Um, no subsidies. Um. I was in the shower while you were. Describing thing, but I think I get the general idea. And whatever they can do, let them do. Um, the downlighting, I think, is good for the for the wildlife. But no subsidies, not one. Done.
All right, thank you, Lynn.
Um, thank you.
Vivian, does anyone else have their hand up?
No.
Okay. All right, then we will go to a board discussion. Um, I'll start since I'm the one who asked, who called this up. I just want to thank staff for um. Going that extra mile to talk to the uh open space at the county and incorporating and even expanding a bit on what their recommendations were. It addresses my concerns. Um, any comments, any discussion people want to have? Hands up. Okay, um, then uh would someone like to make a motion? Uh, Hella, you have something?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. Um. I noticed that the suggested motion language by staff does not include um that. The approval would be subject to the recommended conditions of approval in the staff memo. So my recommendation would be that if one of you chooses to use the suggested motion language to add that in.
Right, what's the phrase that has to be added? I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
In subject to the recommended conditions of approval in the staff memorandum.
Okay, hold on, I'm just writing that out. Okay. All right, uh. Memo random. Okay, since I just wrote it down, I'll go ahead and make the motion. Okay, so motion to approve use review application L U R two zero two two dash zero 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 two eight. Uh. Adopting the staff memo. Subject to the recommendations of approval and staff memorandum. And adopt adopting the staff memorandum as findings of fact. Including the attached analysis of review criteria. Does that work, Hella?
Yeah, just to clarify, I think you were missing subject to the recommended conditions of approval, I think.
You are correct. All right, let me do it again. I apologize, folks.
I apologize.
Writing, it's okay, writing on the fly. Okay. Starting over, a motion to approve use review application L U R two zero two two dash zero zero zero. Two eight, subject to the condition, the recommendation, recommended conditions of approval in the staff memorandum. And adopting the staff memorandum as findings of fact, including the attached analysis of review criteria. Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Laura. Um, any comments? Any discussion? Mark? Uh, you're you're muted, Mark. Mark, you're muted.
I'll speak quickly to the motion uh in support of the motion. I was out there. I was out there today and I visited the brewery, visited Twin Lakes and um rode around the whole area. And uh, the thing that the maps that that are in the packet don't show that Google Maps, when you zoom out a little bit, does. Is the fact that um A- the Avery Brewing Site comes to a point. At the seating area, at the proposed seating area, that would be at the southeast corner of their site. And then the Twin Lakes comes to a corner uh that would be at the northwest side of Twin Lakes and the and the adjacent. The influence of of the property, one property on each other. It is really quite quite small in comparison to other existing properties that are adjacent. To the Twin Lakes property, the day school and a couple manufacturing facilities on the west uh on the south and west of of uh. Of of Twin Lakes. And so I appreciate Sarah bringing this forward with concerns about. Uh, impact on the Twin Lake Site and um. And I I feel like the the additional conditions the staff has placed as well as the site configuration. Uh, for me, address those concerns, so I'm in support of this.
Hey, Kurt?
Uh, I'll just say that I've sat out on this temporary patio many times uh since my previous work was right near there. And um it can get quite hot because it's on the south side. And so I really appreciate the additional condition about the landscaping around the new uh seating area. Because I think that that will help to moderate the the temperature there on that's outside. So I appreciate staff providing. Thank you.
Laura?
Uh, I agree with my colleagues. I think this is a win-win-win. It'll be better for the wildlife, better for the patrons of the patio. Uh, better for the business. So I think this is an example of the process working well. So thank you to staff for uh following up on Sarah's concerns and thank you, Sarah, for bringing this forward. Uh, I think this is well done. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I will reread the motion, hopefully in exactly the way I read it before. A motion to approve use review application L U R two zero two two dash zero 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 two eight. Subject to the recommended conditions of approval in the staff memorandum and adopting the staff memorandum as findings of fact. Including the attached analysis of review criteria. Uh, George?
Yes.
Lee, uh, Laura?
Yes.
ML?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Sarah is a yes, so it's six zero. Thank you very much, Chandler, and I think Christopher must be representing the applicant. So thank you very much, Christopher, as well.
Yes, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay. All right. We have sped through this meeting. If only all of our meetings were this fast. Okay. So now let's go to matters from the planning board. Um, I know we have, Laura wants to talk about the airport situation. Uh, staff wants to discuss retreat, and if anyone else has. Other issues, just raise your hand now and I'll call on you. Okay, so let's start with staff. Please. Oh, Charles and Brad, I see Brad.
Yeah. Deferred, Charles.
Yeah, I think the only thing we wanted to raise with the board is that um, you know, typically when we uh happen to be planning board member, um, it usually means it's around time for a. Retreat, so just wanted to get a feel from the board on whether or not you were interested in having a retreat toward the end of the summer. Devin would be happy to pull the board on a time that works. I think typically what we do is get a little retreat subcommittee together to do some agenda planning and then um we'll check back in with uh the rest of the board. Uh, prior to the meeting, so that was the only thing we wanted to raise with the board tonight.
Uh, so I'll just speak, I think a retreat would be helpful. Um, and if somebody would like to, I don't know what the timing would be. But if there are two people who would like to serve on the committee to plan a retreat, um. Now would be a good time to uh let us know. Um, maybe Kurt and ML, you can lower your hand unless you're. Volunteering to be on the retreat committee. Okay, so. Um, Mark is uh Mark is out of, you're volunteering yourself? Okay, is would someone else like to volunteer themselves? We need one more person and we're not going to volunteer Lisa, who's not here.
Can I, can I um urge Kurt to volun-? Thank you, Kurt. I think since you're the new member, we want to make sure it meets your needs, so.
Okay. So i- is okay, Charles, if we just have uh Devin, Kurt and Mark talk and figure out. Offer some, figure out some possible dates and and then start the discussion.
Sounds great.
Devin, do you mind taking that on? You are so awesome. Thank you to the three of you. Okay. Staff, anything else to discuss?
No, I'll just add that the uh retreat committee members are responsible for cooking the food. So just keep that in mind.
I would, the one thing I'd add is if we could do this in person, I think it would be very helpful.
Yeah.
Uh, and uh, there's a lot of tension on this particular setup of the board and part of it is because we don't ever interact or maybe some people interact. Separately, but we never get together as a board and uh I think that would help a lot.
I I I've just got to say that I think um. Brad and his kind of heart of darkness, white, black, uh, lighting tonight. Uh, maybe is maybe is the the root cause of all of this, but anyway. I just, but Sarah, I I concur. Um, uh, that was really the driving factor behind for my. Uh, supporting, actually having a retreat would be an occasion to be together in person and uh. Uh, and prove our uh general relationship. So yes, I agree.
All right, um, next will be Laura, who has an update on the airport.
Sure, so um I can make this brief, or if folks have questions, tonight might be a good night since we did end early with our official business. And I don't know if folks have questions about the airport and what's been happening, but I will just briefly say. We're we're kind of right in the thick of things with the airport process. As you know, it's a community visioning process. And the stage that we're at now is that uh staff and the consultant team have taken in all of the input that they've gotten from multiple sources. Um, and made four scenarios and tonight was the open house. Uh, it ended at six o'clock to, it was a second open house to get people's reactions to those four scenarios. As well as a slate of near-term activities that could happen in the next zero to five years. Uh, I think those were the main things that they asked for input on. There's also a questionnaire up on Be Heard Boulder until August second, so I would encourage folks. To check it out, look at the four scenarios. You're more than welcome to register your opinion as an individual and participate. I really think it's important that the city hear from a diverse array of voices. The um. Just by the nature of things, the airport stakeholder community, the pilot community, the tenants of the airport. Are pretty organized. They have existing mechanisms to talk to each other and they're all on a mailing list from the airport. So that's like a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty people that are. Showing up and being heard, which is really good. I mean, they're an important stakeholder voice here, but there are also other voices in the community. So I'm hoping that we can uh individually and with our networks, um, just encourage people to learn about this. Learn about the pros and cons of all the scenarios and and make your voice heard, because I, this is bigger than just people who currently use the airport, as we all, as we all know. Um, I did also, so that's kind of my brief update of where we are, where we're headed. Is that after this period of public input closes with the survey closing, and I think staff are also doing another round of. Um, you know, they consult with the San Lazaro and Vista Village residents, since they're disadvantaged community that's quite near the airport. Um, and I'm not, I'm not sure if there's any other uh direct outreach that staff is doing. If there is, and I'm failing to remember it. But um they're collecting all the input, then the next stage is they will be developing, trying to develop one preferred scenario to discuss with city council. And I think they will share with city council the whole range of scenarios that were considered, the input that was received. And how they got from that through their analysis process of the public input and other factors. Logistics of working with the FAA and all of that FAA requirements to get to a preferred scenario. There is a check-in with council on August twenty-fourth. I don't know how far along everything will be, but that's just a check-in. That's not a decision point, although council may provide some guidance at that time. The real decision happens after the new council is elected uh in January of next year. So and at that point, council will have an opportunity to say. We want to go forward with an airport scenario and go into an airport master plan and give some guidance on that. Or we're going to put the master planning process on hold and continue to explore decommissioning and building a new neighborhood. I think that's the big choice. And Brad or Charles or someone can correct me if I'm framing that wrong, but I think city council will have that opportunity. In January, so that's that's kind of where all of this is leading to. So um, and I also just want to disclose personally, you know, you all know that my profession is I'm a public policy facilitator. I really thoroughly believe in community education and diverse voices being involved. So I have made myself available to any group that wants to talk to me or individual. So I have met with aviation interests. I have met with neighborhood interests. I'll be meeting with some environmental groups. Anybody who wants to talk to me, I'm happy to have a conversation. I want to hear their perspective. I want to answer any questions that they might have about, you know, what is the city's uh. Guidance around housing, what could this look like? I'm not trying to say that I have the answers. I'm just saying. You know, for example, if there were a neighborhood here, it would not be all one housing type. It would not be all luxury housing. It would not be all affordable housing. That's according to, you know, BBCP policies and things like that. So I can help answer questions like that. Um, and just, I'm really trying to invite people into the conversation. I've been talking to journalists. I really want this to be a community-wide conversation, which I think. This is an issue that merits that that level of detail. So I have been talking to folks. Um. And you may have seen, there was an article yesterday, they came out in the Boulder Reporting Lab in which I am quoted. So I just want there to be no surprises that folks know that I am having these conversations. And when I express my personal opinions, I make it very clear, I'm not representing planning board. I can't speak for the city. I'm not a city employee. I'm just one person. Um, and I want this to be a real, a real conversation and everyone to know. You know, we should talk about what's great about the airport. We should talk about the problems with the airport. We should talk about what could be there for housing. And and it could be alternative uses also. It doesn't have to be housing, even though that seems to be the the push. So let me stop there and say. Any questions, anything folks want to talk about tonight with regard to this airport process?
Thank you, Laura, very much. Oh, sorry, Mark.
I was just gonna say, good job. I uh.
All right, thanks. Um, okay, thank you, Laura.
Thanks, and but Brad, did you have something you wanted to add from staff's perspective?
No, I don't think so. It's all good. We uh, we continue to be. Uh. As a department in liaison with uh transportation and transit. You know, recognizing this is their their process, but Kathleen King in our office is our main lead.
Thank you, Brad. Okay, uh, any other uh things that board member, ML? And then Kurt?
Thank you, Sarah. Um, I just wanted to put out. So there is a, I'm the liaison to DAB. And Mark is the backup. And neither of us can make the thirteenth of September DAB meeting. So if there are any other people. On. Planning board who would like to attend that. It's not. Required, we don't have to have a liaison there, but it would be nice uh if anybody would like to attend. September thirteenth is the meeting um in question, and if there are any volunteers, you you can, I guess, email. Um. Or volunteer now.
Why don't we let people look at their schedules and then email you if that's okay, ML?
Perfect. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you. Kurt, you had your hand up?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to follow up with staff. I had asked a question a few weeks back about. Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to follow up with staff. I had asked a question a few weeks back about. Whether uh there might be any changes to city code required in order to meet the requirements of Prop one twenty three. And and receive that money, and I just wanted to follow up and see if you've had a chance to make any progress on investigating that.
Um. Yes, I believe we do. I I don't know that I can represent it and and do it justice, but I'm I'm happy to send along information. Um. Well, and let me make sure I understand correctly, you you're asking about the criteria by which that would be determined? The affordable housing.
Yeah, so my understanding is that Prop one twenty three imposes certain, in order to receive the the funding from the state. There are certain requirements that are imposed upon a local jurisdiction. And it just wasn't clear to me whether or not we met those. And so I, so I was just uh asking whether staff had looked into that. Um. And and what if, you know, i- if the judgment was, yes, we need it, or if we don't need it, if there, you know, what changes might be required?
Right. Yeah, I was part of uh email correspondence back and forth between the state or at least partial correspondence. Partially included on some of the correspondence between the state and the Housing and Human Services Department uh staff. Were following up on that. But my recollection, and I'll get confirmation on this, of course, is that. Uh the criteria was not well defined. Um there were some opportunities for jurisdictions in applying for that. To define things in a certain way. Um the long and the short of it is. The city was recently um designated as as. Getting some of that funding, so I'll I'll send along both that information and then a a follow up to your question Kurt, which will probably. Involve um. Having one of our HHS uh staff elaborate on that.
Okay, that sounds great. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for going.
Hey, Hella, anything? Oh, sorry, Hella, before you come out, um M L just raised her hand again. M L.
Sorry, um I have a question for Kurt, actually. Kurt, you're on the Boulder Junction. Um. Group, because at DAB, they did a big presentation on the status of it. Is did something big happen?
Well.
There a milestone that was met?
Not not that I've been made aware of. Uh the last thing that I was involved with was an open house. Which was held at um. The. Junkyard Social, whatever that's called.
Yes.
And I think uh yeah, uh Laura was there, I think. And. Oh, and M L was there, yeah, yeah, right, of course, sorry. And uh so you know, they were still presenting the 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 multiple options and I mentioned, I think I I talked. At a subsequent planning board meeting about the options that were being considered in some of the setups and so on. So that that's the last I know, but they don't always ask me for my permission to go ahead.
Um yeah, well, I I saw um them making a big presentation. That was, you know, kind of the, I guess, input from. Whomever on DAB sits on that um. Committee. And I said, oh. We're meeting tomorrow night or yeah, next week or I guess it's tomorrow night. And um Kurt will give us our presentation, so okay, and no pressure. And DAB is presenting fancy little PowerPoints. About the process, but. Cool, nothing. Thank you.
All right, Hella, do you have anything for us?
I don't have anything. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you too. Devin, do you have anything for us?
I have nothing, thanks.
All right. I am going to applaud our, I'm gonna give us all a round of applause. This was a ninety four minute meeting. If we could do more of these, we'd all, life would be good. Okay, and I am now going to uh close out this meeting. Adjourn, enjoy your evening.
Hi.